I haven't used this gavel all year, so I try not to start. No trouble, Bobby, no trouble. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, provided to Nutley Township Clerk, tap into Nutley and the district newspapers on June 11, 2025, and posted on the district website. Will everybody please stand for the flag salute?
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. DeVita.
Mr. Bosamo.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Here.
And Dr. Delia.
Here.
Mr. Fraschinalles. Mr. Gilberti. Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
Mrs. Quirk.
Here.
Mr. Scotty.
Here.
Mr. Farro.
Here.
Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you all for joining us for this very special occasion and a very special meeting of the Nutley Board of Education. Tonight, we gather at Lincoln School, a place filled with memories and milestones to honor a man whose connection to this building runs deeper than most. It is my honor to welcome you to the official naming of the Charles W. Kozinski Jr. Auditorium. So before we begin, I'd like to recognize some of the distinguished guests we have joined with us for this meaningful moment. We're honored to be joined by members of the New Jersey State Senate, Senator Brittany Timberlake. From the New Jersey State Assembly, Assemblywoman Mike Venezia and Assemblywoman Carmen Morales. We also have former Assemblyman Ralph Caputo. And former Assemblyman Fred Scolera. From the Essex County Board of Commissioners, President Carlos Blumaris. From the Nutley Board of Commissioners, we have Dr. Joseph Scarpelli. Mauro Tucci. Tom Evans. And Al Patraco. And Mayor Kelly could not be here tonight. He had a working engagement he couldn't get out of. But he does send us a message that we'll read later for Charlie. And we also have our very own Essex County Superintendent of Schools, Joe Zara. Also with us tonight, Michael Graziano, Councilman with the Clarkstown New York Town Council. And here's where I hope I don't miss anyone, because I do see a lot of former Board of Ed members here, but we have the Honorable Alan Jenna Temple. Sal Oliver. Charri Del Tufo. Michelle Flotelle. Dan Particella. And Fred Scolera, again, doing double duty. I hope I didn't miss anyone else. If I did, I apologize. Most of all, tonight, we are especially grateful to be joined by Charlie's dear friends and beloved family members, who have supported him through every step of this incredible journey. Lorraine, I know that you're here. You're gonna mention everyone later on, but welcome to his family and friends. For Charles Kozinski, Lincoln School is not just a school. It's where it all began. He walked these halls as a student, sat in these classrooms, and even in his very auditorium, forming the values that would guide a lifetime of service. To name this auditorium in his honor is not just a recognition, it's a homecoming. Charlie has served the Nutley Board of Education for a remarkable 30 years, a milestone that reflects not just longevity, but dedication, passion, and an unshakable belief in the power of public education. Over those decades, he has been a tireless advocate for the students, a champion of our district, and a steady voice for what is right and necessary to help our schools thrive. And if you walk around this building and look closely, you just might find the initials CWK etched in the molding. Right, Charlie? Proof that Charlie's connection to Lincoln School goes back even further than most records can show. That's what makes tonight so meaningful. Charlie is a proud graduate of Lincoln School. This building helped shape who he became and who he is tonight. We return the favor by celebrating the mark he has left on this school and on this town. I must also point out that Charlie's father, his sister, and his two daughters also graduated from this school. Charlie has always believed that schools are more than academics. They're about building confidence, creating opportunities, and giving every child a chance to be seen, heard, and valued. That's why naming this auditorium in his honor is such a perfect tribute. It reflects his values, his vision, and his lifelong love for Nutley. So this evening, we don't just unveil a name over the auditorium doors. We celebrate a legacy, one of leadership, heart, and unwavering service that will continue to inspire generations of students to come. Charlie, on a personal note, I am honored to have served alongside you on this board for the past 11 years. But even more meaningful to me is the friendship we've shared for more than 20 years. Over those two decades, I've come to know you not just as a colleague, but as a true friend, someone whose loyalty, generosity, and wisdom have meant more than words can say. I am deeply thankful for your guidance, your trust, and the steady example you set for all of us. I'm also incredibly proud to be part of tonight's ceremony, a moment that reflects everything we value about public service, education, and community. I'm gonna have our superintendent, Kent Bania, he has a little bio that he'd like to read about Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Charles W. Kozinski Jr., or Charlie, as so many of us know him, is the definition of a lifelong public servant. He was first elected to the Nutley Board of Education in 1982 and served until 1997. After a brief retirement, he returned in 2010 and has continued to serve to this day, a remarkable 30-year commitment to Nutley's children, educators, and families. A proud Nutley native, Charlie's roots go back to 1920, when his grandmother opened Kozinski's Bakery on Franklin Avenue. He walked the halls of Lincoln School as a young student in 1946, just like his father had in 1924. His daughter is followed in 1978, and now his grandchildren are on their own Nutley journey. Ryan will be graduating on Thursday in the class of 2025, and Justin will be a sophomore in Nutley High School. Charlie is a U.S. Navy veteran of the Vietnam War, a 34-year career firefighter who retired as an executive officer, and he earned a degree in education from Montclair State University. Throughout his 30-year tenure, he served as president seven times and vice president five times, chaired many committees, and worked alongside six different superintendents. Today, we honor Charlie not just for what he has done, but for who he is, a tireless advocate, a community cornerstone, and a man who has always put Nutley first. I've known Charlie for much of my, I've known of Charlie for much of my career in Nutley, but I really got to know him as I moved into administration, especially when I joined central office in 2016. It didn't take long for me to realize that Charlie is someone who deeply values education, not just in words, but in action. He supports our schools, our students, and especially our educators, in both big ways and small ways. One of the things I've come to appreciate is Charlie's early morning phone calls. Sometimes they're to recap a conversation we had, sometimes to revisit an idea he's had, always thoughtful, always direct, and always driven by what's best for Nutley. And then there are his building visits. If you work in Nutley, you know what I mean. He's a fixture in our schools and facilities. And yes, Charlie, thank you for always calling me to let me know you're going there first. Charlie, as a board member, is steady and principled. He brings a sense of duty to every meeting, always thinking about how decisions will affect students, families, and staff. He doesn't just listen, he engages, he questions, and he looks for solutions. Charlie, as a community member, is equally committed. Whether it's a school concert, a town event, or ribbon cutting, he's there not for recognition, but because he genuinely cares. And Charlie, as a friend, he's loyal, honest, and grounded, the kind of person who tells you what you need to hear, not just what you want to hear, and somehow makes you laugh along the way. Today's dedication is a fitting tribute to someone who has given so much of himself to this district and this town. Charlie, this auditorium will carry your name, but even more importantly, it carries your spirit, which is strong, supportive, and full of pride for Nutley. Congratulations and thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Bania. At this time, I want to open up comments from our Board of Education members here. We'll start from my left, Steve. You're good? Nick?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Charlie, your three decades of service have shaped our schools in so many lasting ways. My very own time here as a student surely wouldn't have been as great without your leadership. Your deep knowledge, steady leadership, and commitment to our district and town continue to strengthen our community. I'm honored to serve alongside you and learn from your example. You've made me a much better board member. With your name on the new Lincoln School auditorium, future generations will remember and appreciate, just like mine does, the work you've done and continue to do for Nutley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scotty. Mr. Bosamo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're here to honor someone who has played such an important role in the education of our youth longer than any other volunteer public servant in education, and by extension, his lovely wife, who stands strong by his side, making it possible for him to volunteer his time to do the important work that he's done for 30 years. The very first time I met Charlie was 10 years ago. We had coffee at the Nutley Diner. He expressed his love for our town, the importance of our school system, and that Nutley, in his eyes, was an oasis. Charlie's love for our community and our schools cannot be questioned. He's fiercely loyal to his friends, his family, and our town. Charlie, you have shown me that you're both an admirably humble and easy person to work with. You are uniquely and especially deserving of being honored forever in this way. Through the years, I've called you Charlie, Charles, CWK. One time, I mistakenly tried to sneak in a chuck, but I am always most proud to call you my friend. Congratulations to you, Mr. Kozinski, for the commitment and extraordinary dedication to the children of the town that we love in the past, present, and the future.
Thank you, Mr. Bosamo. Mr. Delia?
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone, I have a little different spin on what I'm going to say about Charlie, because he's accomplished so much, and just from looking around, you can see how much he's actually impacted people's lives. So you don't show up for these events lightly. You come with heavy heart and soul. And when you speak, sometimes you, I feel it's necessary to speak about the unspoken. And the unspoken, in this case, is the amount of time dedicated, over 30 years, to the citizens, the children of Nutley, and also the selflessness of his family. So when we dedicate a room, a space, to someone, it's filled with numbers. How many students have passed through here and will pass through here? But I told Charlie I would do this, and I'm going to embarrass him a little, but it's kind of what Charlie and I do to each other. Something to think about, over 30 years, on a conservative estimate of five hours a week, it literally amounts to 7,800 hours over a 30-year period. Now, when you break that down a little further into minutes, it's 468,000 minutes dedicated conservatively. Now, we know Charlie, that's very conservative. Conservatively towards servitude in this town, this Board of Education. Now, what is hidden there is all the time that he spent away from his family to dedicate that time to us, to this town, to this community, to the children. So when you look at the plaque that will bear his name in this wonderful room, think about that 468,000 minutes that he spent conservatively away from his family and their selflessness in giving that time, their husband, their father, to us, to allow him to do that. And again, I'm being conservative. So Charlie, congratulations. It's well deserved. Lorraine and Charlie's family, thank you for your selflessness, too.
Thank you, Mr. Delia. Mrs. Quirk?
Charlie and I had started off a little bit rocky, okay? We had a little bit of a rocky way to starting off, because he and I were pretty much in different, you know, different sides. But I have to say, when I came onto the board, he was very patient with me. Like, I was brand new. This was the side of me that, you know, I never did this before. So I was on negotiations. They decided to put me on negotiations. So there I, I'm still there, just so you know. And Charlie really helped me get through negotiations, what things were like, how we had to do it on the other side, because I was a teacher before, and I was on negotiations on the other side. So this was a totally different thing. And I can't tell you the number of hours that he would be, you know, in negotiations with us, or all the times that he would prep and he would call up everybody on negotiations. He spent hours with me, like, you know, "Hey, Terry, I gotta tell you this. I gotta do this. What are we doing?" There were times when I was using, you know, I was not happy about things, and I would vent to him, and I spent time, like, you know, I would say, "Charlie, I'm really sorry, but I gotta tell you this." So, but he did spend that time with somebody who was brand new, brand new at this. And there were times that we got together on issues, and he'd be like, "I can't believe I agree with you on this." And that was basically our relationship. And so I want to thank you, Charlie, for being patient with me and helping me through that time. And he really did put in all that work. I mean, it is like Tom said, it was hours and hours and hours that he dedicated to this district. And we, you know, we are so lucky to have him. So thank you, Charlie, for all your time.
Mr. Dancheck-Martin?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with deep pride and heartfelt gratitude that we gather here today to honor a remarkable individual, a person whose unwavering dedication to service, community, and education has left an indelible mark on generations past, present, and surely the future. Today, we are just not naming an auditorium. We are telling a story, a story that began right here, within the very walls of this school, when a young student first walked these hallways, not knowing the legacy they would sometime leave behind. That student grew up to serve our country with honor in the United States Navy. They answered the call of duty, not just in defense of our nation, but later as a firefighter, risking their life to protect others. And even after hanging up the uniform, their sense of service didn't end. It only evolved. For over 30 years, this person has volunteered with tireless energy, mentoring, organizing, leading, and always showing up when it mattered most. Today, they continue to shape the very system that shaped them, making decisions that uplift our students and strengthen our schools. It is only fitting that this auditorium is now named in honor of someone who has dedicated their life to lifting others. Charlie, thank you for your bravery, your service, your leadership, and your heart. You remind us all that greatness is not measured in titles or accolades, but in the lives touched and community strengthened. I hope every child that walks through these doors sees your name, understands the true impact comes from giving back, and may they, too, be inspired to serve, to care, and to lead, just like you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dancheck-Martin. So now, we're gonna, before we open it up to public comment, we're gonna do the official dedication here. It's a plaque. Charlie, this plaque here is actually yours. You're gonna be able to take this home. Okay, you could hang it wherever Lorraine says you could hang it, right, Lorraine? But we do have one that is outside in the hallway, and after we conclude at the meeting tonight, we're gonna go out to the hallway. We're gonna actually unveil it, and we also have a sign over the door, and we're gonna unveil that as well. But this is a plaque dedicating the Lincoln School Auditorium in honor of Charles W. Kozinski Jr. We're gonna be able to take a lot of pictures later, so... Charlie, also, to mark your 30 years as a member of the Nutley Board of Education, the New Jersey School Board Association has a milestone award, presenting you for 30 years for gratitude, for 30 years of dedication to the children of the Nutley Board of Education and the state of New Jersey. So this is a plaque from school boards confirming your 30 years of service, along with a pin for 30 years of service. So we now come to that portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on reports, resolutions, and all school-related matters. Our Board Regulations Number 0167 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after all those wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded, if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. And does anyone have any comments? And before, we have a list, actually, so I like to work through the list, because there are people that have things that they want to say about Charlie. So from the Nutley Board of Commissioners, we have here Commissioner Scarpelli, Commissioner Tucci, Commissioner Evans, and Commissioner Patraco.
You just have to flip the switch right here.
That one? We have a proclamation for you, Charlie, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. I'm not gonna read it, but we do want to say a couple of things, I think. You know, the Scarpelli and the Kozinski family have been friends for forever. We have similar memories in this building. My grandmother went to school here. My father went to school here. My brothers and sisters went to school here. And my nieces and nephews went to school. Five generations went to school at Lincoln School, similar to the Kozinski family. One of the first elections I ever worked on, besides what the name Scarpelli attached to it, was with Charlie Kozinski way back in the 1980s. So we go back a long way. We had fun in those days. We all became very good friends. My grandfather would have picnics, and Charlie and Lorraine would always be there. This is well deserved. I think you're officially now the dean of the Nutley Board of Education, officially. And just congratulations on an honor that's well deserved, and Godspeed to you.
Charlie, first and foremost, I want to say congratulations to you, and I want to thank this entire Board of Education for having the intelligence and the foresight of recognizing this man. Because if you know Charlie Kozinski, you know that he is the ultimate Nutley guy. And if we look around this room, we have many quality Nutley people who've given their lives and dedicated much of their home life to our township. But Charlie, you stand out in spite of everyone else who has done so much for this township. And those of us that know you know you eat, sleep, and breathe Nutley, New Jersey. You are the ultimate public servant. I feel privileged to be here and honored to watch this event happen tonight. You are most deserving. Lorraine, thank you for loaning him to us. Thank the rest of your family. I know Charlie's sister's here. I know the children, ones that hear about this, all right, are gonna be extra proud like we are. I just want to say thank you for what you have done. Thank you for what you presently do, and we look forward to everything you're going to do. God bless you, Charlie.
Charlie, you know, I thought about a lot of things coming here today. And I'm trying to think of my comments, because I don't want to be redundant and be told to sit down by the president of the board, as he just said. But there are a couple of things come to mind. I got to know you over the years. I know that everybody tells me that you're a patient person, although personally, I never experienced it. So, because your passion for what you want to get done always seems to step to the front. There's nothing that I can recall in my thoughts over the past couple of days where I ever noticed you ever to want to accept less than what it should be and less than what you wanted it to be, because what you wanted it to be was the best. And so your relentless pursuit of just going after the very best it could be actually is an inspiration, and it's an inspiration to everybody. I also know, because of you, when I look at your Facebook posts and things like that, it's uncomfortable for you to be here to do this, go through this, because I know you're private about what you do, and I know that feeling, because I am the same way. But when I see you on your tractor, you know, up in New York, and you're calling it paradise, when I see you holding pictures of some kind of fish that you caught with your grandchildren, right? I think those are the things that will always stand out, is that as a father, as a grandpa, as a leader of the community, as a loving husband with a wonderful wife, I couldn't be more thrilled that someone has taken the time to honor you in this way. So congratulations.
Charlie, so, I know, I'll be nice. I consider you just more than a friend, almost like an uncle, because I've seen the good sides of you, and I've seen not-so-good sides of you to me. And I could always know when Charlie was mad at me, because Charlie would say, "Patraco, are you gonna stop now? Are you gonna stop?" And, you know, we've hunted, fished together through the years, and you're much more than just a friend to me. You are like an uncle, and your family is like family to me. And I want to tell you, I've been to a lot of awards- And I want to tell you, I've been to a lot of awards ceremonies through the years in Nutley since I was a kid, and if there's somebody that deserves it, it's you, my friend. You make Nutley a better place to live, and that's from my heart and from my family. Congratulations, very well deserved.
As I mentioned before, Mayor Kelly couldn't be here tonight. He had a work appointment that wasn't, he wasn't able to reschedule. So he did send a message, and Mr. Banyer here would like to read that.
From Mayor Kelly, he writes, "Charlie has been a fixture on the board for most of my life. His dedication and commitment to the town and to the children of Nutley has left an indelible mark on the community. That mark is not fixed, but is carried by decades of children who pass through the halls of Nutley schools and is carried with them wherever they go. The reach of that mark is immeasurable, but is surely worldwide. There is no way that Nutley can ever repay the dedication and commitment, but naming the Lincoln School Auditorium after him is the least we can do, and a way we can honor his indelible mark by dedicating a permanent reminder of him and his incredible work. I am truly sorry that I cannot be here in person. I had a meeting that I could not move. However, my absence does not make this moment any less meaningful for this community. Charlie, my friend, I extend my warmest congratulations and deepest apologies for not being there in person. Thank you for all that you have done and all that you continue to do." Mayor Kelly.
From our county superintendent of schools, Joe Zara.
Good evening. When I first met Charlie in 1981, it was Mr. Kozinski, then eventually it was Charles Kozinski, then it was Charlie, and eventually Charlie K. Charlie is the perfect example of servant leadership. It is never about him. It is about maximizing opportunities for students and staff. I always view board members not as board members, but as trustees. You're entrusted with this school district, and every individual in this community, every parent, every student depends on every one of you to do the right thing. And Charlie is so well-represented, representative of this group. Charlie is a dedicated public servant with a deep and sincere love for Nutley, very visible in the community, committed, steady, solid in word and deed. It's fitting that we pause and recognize all that he has achieved and all that he has helped others achieve. In honor of who he is and the difference he made, the impact he had and continues to have, all this makes this evening so meaningful and so necessary, so well-deserved. Congratulations, Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Zara. From our county Board of Commissioners, President Carlos Pemeras.
Good evening, and on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, Essex County is very proud of you, Charlie, for all that you have done. Aside from serving as a commissioner, as an educator, and my wife, we know what this really means, since we've dedicated our lives to the same field, and it's quite inspiring to see someone do that. I don't know if Tom qualified it, but for three hours, long hours, Charlie and I served as a judge and a spelling bee in Belleville. I don't know if you took that into consideration, because that's outside of Nutley. It was the most tense three hours I've ever had. One of us had to ring the bell when the kids made a mistake, and we felt awful doing it. I suspect over the weekend, he's gonna spend another three hours rearranging the living room with all of these plaques that he's gonna get as well. But it is a true honor. I want to thank the superintendent of the board for inviting me to be here to serve a tiny role in this very big celebration. And what a treat it is to know that somewhere in these halls, there's another Charles Kozinski of the future, and they're gonna see your picture up there, and they'll probably see that picture all their life, and maybe one day, they'll be honored in a way similar to this, because they were inspired by people like you. And I think that that's the greatest legacy that we as educators could do, is to inspire and to give while beyond our time. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Lorraine, we're gonna have to get him some help, bring it all that home. Hope the grandkids are here. Okay. So with us from the State Assembly, we have Assemblywoman Carmen Morales and Assemblyman Mike Vinesia.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, thank you, Superintendent, thank you, Board, for allowing us to speak this evening. On behalf of the State Assembly, we have our state senator here. I know she's gonna share some words, but it is a true honor to be here to recognize the incredible legacy of Charlie Kozinski Jr. For 30 years, he devoted himself to students, families, and educators of Nutley. I know how that is as a former board member, as a former trustee, as a former teacher and principal. I know the dedication that it takes to really put all you love into the children of the community that you live in. Dedicating this auditorium in his name ensures that your legacy is going to live on, because think of it, just like an auditorium, where it is a place where voices are heard and talents are showcased, Charlie, as a board member, you ensured that every voice in Nutley schools mattered. So on behalf of the state of New Jersey, and as your representatives in the legislative 34th district, it is our honor and our greatest, deepest respect for you to give you a commendation to you. So congratulations to you and your family, and a heartfelt gratitude for your extraordinary service.
Charlie, it's an honor to be here tonight. You know, 30 years, wow. Like Tom said, those hours, and we all know you put in a lot more, you know, you should take your wife on a nice vacation for the hours you were gone. But, you know, just the fact that Nutley's children going to this school will see your name and know the dedication you put in, and that's a very great honor, and I just wanted to be here tonight to say congratulations. Thank you.
So as I mentioned before, we also have two former assemblymen. But besides them being assemblymen, they are also dear friends of Charlie. So at this time, I'd like to call up Assemblyman Ralph Caputo.
Charles, let me just say this. I have never seen this kind of dedication for any elected official in all of my life. Let's give him a big round of applause. It's amazing, just amazing. And all the wonderful things that were said, I'm not gonna repeat them, it's just gonna be redundant. But let me, let me say to you, as someone that served in the legislature and on the Board of Freeholders, now they call it the Commissioners, whatever that means, it was always a privilege to represent the town of Nutley. For over 30 years, I've been here. Whether I lived here or not, I always represented this town. And out of all the public officials, and they're all great, you know, I'm very close to many of them, you are outstanding in terms of advocating for the kids, for the taxpayers, for the interests of the people of the town of Nutley. You make Nutley the Nutley that we love and deserve. So I'm just personally very thrilled to be associated with you, and I love the cheesecake from Kozinski's. It reminded me of the cheesecake. And the reason why I bring that up, for those that don't know, my father was in that business in terms of supplying supplies to bakeries, so we knew about Kozinski's. It was one of the most outstanding places, and look what they produced. A sweetheart. There he is. God bless him. So in closing, and of course, this town always has officials that advocate. You know, we've got people here that drive you crazy, you know? I don't want to mention names. They'll drive you into the ground, but that's what, that's what needs to be done when you're really, truly interested in serving your constituents. And you've done that. You've done it successfully, because these things don't happen for anyone. This happens for very special people, and you're one of those special people. You're a great guy. We love you, Charlie. You always had an open heart for anyone that would come to you, and you always tried to do something to help another individual, whether it be a student, whether it be just a relevant constituent, and that's why you were always rewarded to be elected over and over again, because people know. People know when you're doing a good job. You don't have to tell them. They'll understand that the job is being done. So my congratulations to you and to the superintendent, and the president of the board, and all the other board members for this event, to give someone the recognition that they deserve. A very class act here. These are very special people here in Nutley. They're like nowhere else. God bless you. God bless you all. Thank you.
Also, we have Assemblyman Fred Scolera, who, Fred, how many years did you work on the fire department with Charlie?
So we're gonna go down the little brick road here, a couple of minutes on a couple of things. So first off, most of you don't know, but I met Charlie, I was 14 years old. That's how long we have been together and with his family. I've been on vacation, we travel together. I mean, it's just been great. But let me just say that next to my father, Charlie's the next one that really brought me forward to my life into the fire department and all. I says at 16 years old, we had a county program called CETA, and kids got hired, and I worked for Charlie and his father on the Signal Bureau and pulled wire and many different things, and learned about technology and programs, and we just did so many things together throughout our career. You could list them, project after project. If there was a project occurring in Nutley, there was something Charlie wasn't on. SYA, before SYA was at SYA, and other programs. Charlie wasn't just here 30 years. His life has been bringing people along. He truly, I'm telling you, brought me along and into the fire department, worked under him for him, did things. He was dedicated to this town. The school board, yes, but put him on the bigger picture of everything he's done. I bet everybody in this room has called Charlie for a favor, needed something out there, had to be done. But one of the great stories, when he almost didn't, and I, this joke, I did not joke, didn't get elected, was his election was 1982. It's the first time that we had a major snowstorm in the town of Nutley, and the only time elections were shut down and had to restart them another day. True story, Charlie, I was driving his truck, driving people around, we put chains on my truck, and we were picking people up to the polls. When we got them, we didn't have phones, we had used hand walkie-talkies and things to stay in communications, and we got notified, they actually shut the elections down. And we had to go another, I think it was next week, it was finally restarted, and Charlie then won his election, but it's the only time an election in Nutley was shut down. But truly, his family, his life is all Nutley. I could go on and on. I want to thank him for what he's done for me, what he's done for this township, what he's done for the school board, and, you know, we can go back even to, you know, parades and when we had the tanks in town for the 1991 for the war. We had ran the parade in the town of Nutley, Charlie and I. I mean, there's just so many things he's done. So just think of Charlie as not just the school board, not just the town, but really a real friend to the town of Nutley. And again, I'm blessed to have met his father and worked with him throughout his career. So Charlie, congratulations. I'm proud to be here tonight. Thank you to the board for allowing me to say a few words. I just want to make it more personal instead of really to other things, but really, it was great. Thank you.
Thank you. And with us tonight from the State Senate, we have Senator Brittany Timberlake.
Thank you so much, and hello to Nutley. Charlie, what an amazing man you are. We're here in an auditorium. Auditorium for me symbolizes art, and in the school district in particular, I love theater. So I'll say 525,600 minutes. How do you measure a year? And that's from the musical Rent. But then how do you measure times 30? And the impact that you've made on countless lives, of the children who were educated, who walked through these doors, of the parents who were impacted, of the families and the lives and their children's children, too? That you have changed the trajectory just by making sure that quality education was preserved. That is a life well-lived. I have to say, Lorraine, you and I have something in common. We both got a thing for firefighters. My husband is a Newark fireman, and also from a service family. My father is 82nd Airborne, and I see that you served our military in Vietnam. Thank you for your service. That is... We cannot say thank you enough to our veterans, but to see that even with all of that, and after all in which you've experienced there, serving our nation, you come back domestically and serve even more. I think about legacy and what it means to pour into people and what it is that we'll leave behind. And I'll tell you, if we all took a page out of Charlie's book and used our time wisely and living up to our purpose, how about that, a purpose-driven life? I really think that we would not be able to count the positive changes that we could make in this world. Charlie, I wish I could duplicate you a million times over, not just throughout District 34, but also our world. And I'm here out of respect and to let you know that your name is going to be read into the record of the state of New Jersey at our Capitol in Trenton, to be memorialized forever for your outstanding service in 30 years. God bless.
Thank you, Senator Timberlake. Charlie, we tried to get the governor here, we tried to work our way all the way up to the president, but fortunately, we, here's where we are. the President, but fortunately, we, here's where we are. But at this time, I'd like to ask Lorraine Kozinski, Beanie Kozinski, make sure we say Beanie, to come up and, and Lorraine? Lorraine, now is your opportunity, Lorraine.
Now's my time.
You have the mic.
Now's my chance, right? First of all, thank you to everyone who took the time to be here to celebrate our Charlie. He's special to us, but to know he's special to Nutley means a lot to him as well. So we greatly appreciate that. Everything has been said. I mean, I could tell you some stories, but I won't do that. I don't want to ruin this evening. However, what I do want to do is to introduce his family. His sister Martha Kazima, you just give away. Our daughter Patricia. Our daughter and our son, well, he's my son-in-law, but our son, Michael and Stephanie Kenny. Our grandsons, Ryan and Justin, who make us incredibly proud. To our nieces, Jennifer and Lisa, I see you, and Doug and Disa, I can't thank you enough. They've traveled all the way down from Cooperstown, New York to be here tonight. That's a loving family. We've really been blessed, really been blessed. Friends, my, or his son, he has another son, Michael Graziano and his wife Denise. All I can tell you is that I love him from the bottom of my heart. I'm so proud of him from the bottom of my heart, but I thank all of you from the bottom of my heart to be here and honor him. He deserves it.
Thank you, Lorraine. Well, that takes us to you, Charlie. So the mic is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, I'm overwhelmed. I really don't, as my Board members don't believe, I'm at a loss for words. But I will say one thing, until you've served in the trenches, like my Board members, Mr. Olivo, Danny Cornicella, Michelle Flytell, I don't want to go, unfortunately, I don't want to name everybody because I'll always miss somebody. Until you've served in the trenches and paid your time and done what you have to do for our children, you don't know what it takes. The Commissioners, any elected official, you're not always popular, but you put the time in, you make the right decision, it's good for us, and in my mind, it's good for Nutley. I've never made a decision on the Board of Education, and there was, there was a lot of controversy, as we all can relate to, it's not always popular, but it's good for our children. And if it benefits my children, it's going to benefit your children. I love every minute of it. Somebody mentioned to me today, you know, why do you do it? I look forward to it. I mean, this is, I love it. This is what I love to do. I've slowed down a little bit lately because of some issues, but other than that, I still like doing what I'm doing. It serves the community, it serves the town, and I love it. You know, I have two people that I need to recognize only because of what's going on in this world. I still work, I'm 83 years old, and I still work. I teach the State Police, the students that are going up to be inspectors or SOAR licensed in the State Police, I teach them what's going on in the world, how to deal with situations. And the Chief of Police, Stromalow, and the Fire Chief, Paul Kaphon, realize, we volunteer our time. They get paid to risk their life every freaking day, and it's not nice out there right now. It's not nice. And that's what I tell my students in the class, as the world has changed, everybody carries a gun, nobody's happy. I'm happy, we're happy tonight, but most people are not happy. Be careful, be safe out there. The world has changed. I feel for my grandsons, one going to college at St. Leo, the other one's a sophomore. It's a difficult world they're going to be growing up in. And if we don't spend the time as parents, as Board members, as grandparents, to nurture those kids, you're going to go the wrong way. Keep on top of your kids and your grandchildren. I love you all, I can't thank you enough. I did forget one thing. I have a book to present to Lincoln School from the PTA Bulletin, 1950 and 1951. And if you look through this book, you will see Nutley names from top to bottom. Jackie DeVore, our Principal, it's yours to do what you want with. I've had it in my briefcase forever. Thank you. If you don't know the Principal of Lincoln School, Jackie DeVore, outstanding person, doing a great job for our children. When I was here, it was Ms. Kelly. Nobody remembers Ms. Kelly except me, but Ms. Kelly had a ruler in one hand and an open hand like this, and she used neither one of them, okay? You can't do that anymore. Jackie DeVore doesn't do that. But in my opinion, sometimes, in my opinion, sometimes we should, but that's a different story. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. As Mr. Basamo just said, we'll bring that up at the next policy meeting. But, so tonight is all about you, Charlie, and we do still have a few items to go through, but what we're going to do is, once we conclude our meeting, we're going to go outside. There is a plaque that we want to unveil, there's a sign over the door that we want to unveil, and then after that, we're going to go to the cafeteria, we're going to have some light refreshments and just get a chance to enjoy and speak to Charlie. So we're going to continue on. Hopefully, we won't be taking too much of your time. Is anyone else wishing to come up and make a comment?
I wasn't.
Oh.
I wasn't.
Okay.
But I have to. I was trying to get your attention. So CK, that's how I connect with Charlie, okay? So I noticed that when, who was it? Mr. Banyer, when you were talking about his time in the buildings, I noticed that he glanced right over to me, because we had a moment right there. So Charlie, you know the relationship, right? That cold January of 2014, when I first came on the Board, you didn't, you don't know what to expect, right? When you're new. And I will tell you, Charlie immediately took me under his wing. Throughout those 10 years, he made me a better trivia person at Nutley, because it didn't matter where we were, Charlie had a story. Whether it was 1972, '76, '81, '93, okay? So he made me much better at trivia. But what I will tell you is, and this is from the bottom of my heart, you've been a great mentor, you are always there, you always show up. That time, well, you know, the term, when there's a will, there's a way? That man is will and way 2.0. He figures it out, and it's all for the betterment of this community, the families that he has touched over 30 years, right? Those little pieces of Charlie have had an impact for generations of kids. And I appreciate you, I know my family appreciates you, we've had a wonderful relationship, and I know Lorraine, she's a saint with what she's got to deal with you at at times. But we love you, Charlie, and this is the perfect recognition for a perfect individual who has dedicated 30 years of the betterment of this district, and we all appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I know we don't want to go on, but just very briefly, the funny side of that story was Danny was the President. And the Presidents, sometimes, even though they're just one of us, they serve a term for a year, but sometimes they think, anyway, we're not supposed to go to the schools without knowing, without getting the okay of the President of the Board. So I'm not used to that, even though I was the President five times, I'm not used to it. So I would just pop into the school. I make it a habit to try to call the Superintendent, but there are schools, I always thought that it was my schools, there's my taxpayer dollars paying for the school, elected official, I'm going to pop in. Danny and I butted heads on that, but I appreciate the position, but that's what that little reference was too.
Yes. Yeah, you can't stop Charlie, can't stop Charlie. No matter what, so we won't try. So with that, can I get a motion? Oh, Barbara?
Outstanding citizens who led the Special Ed Department back before most of our children
So everyone's talked about Charlie for the last 30 years, except me. Charlie and I went to school together. Charlie, of course, is older than I am, I just want to get that clear right away. The classes of 1959, 1960, and 1961 have a special bond. We always have, we always will. We still get together on a regular basis. In our last lunch, Charlie, you were the topic of conversation, we talked about everything that ever happened. We used to sit on the steps at Kozinski's Bakery and have the most delicious, what did they call them? What did they call them? Charlie, what did they call those great things? Somebody who's Polish, help me. But they were delicious, and we still talk about them today. But you're talking about Charlie for the last 30 years, which is absolutely fantastic. He's done everything. But even back in 1957, '58, '59, when we all used to go to the gym at lunchtime, we would dance. We didn't have proms outside of the school, we made our proms in the gym, and Charlie was always there to help us build like the stairway to the sky. We did all kinds of great stuff. Charlie was always there when one of our classmates needed something. Times were tough then, we're talking the late '50s, the early '60s. We didn't have two cars in our family, we were lucky, we had one car. It was a whole different time, but Charlie was always there if somebody needed food, if somebody needed help doing something, if somebody needed a ride, he'd find a way to get them there. So Charlie, on behalf of the classes of 1959, '60, and '61, we are so proud of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
What Barbara's referring to, and I'm going, I don't want to go way back forever, in Kozinski's Bakery, at the end of the baking day, I worked there from, till all the way through school, whatever was left over at the end of the day, they would put into a big tin, a big pan, and it would be raspberries, strawberries, peaches, whatever it was, cut them up into slices, and they were five cents a slice, but you didn't know what you were getting. It was just leftover from whatever was there, that made my grandmother would sell it. And, you know, that's what we were talking about, but those days are gone, unfortunately.
Thank you. So with that, can I have a motion to close the public comment portion, because I feel if we continue, we might get some secrets of Charlie, when he was, right, from Lorraine or somebody else, so can I? Yes, okay. Motion, that was you, Charlie? Okay, second. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to academic resolutions. Ms. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions, 1 through 3 is written.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Basamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Dilia.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Ms. Kwerk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Fraro.
Yes.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move administration of the 1 through 3.
Roll call?
Mr. Basamo.
Yes. With the exception of number 3, check number 219-996.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Dilia.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Ms. Kwerk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Fraro.
Yes. Ms. Kwerk, personnel?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, that was an abstention.
Okay.
He changes vote to abstention.
Okay.
Ms. Kwerk, personnel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Personnel Resolutions 1 to 2 is written.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Basamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Dilia.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Ms. Kwerk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Fraro.
I'm going abstain. Okay, is there any old business to come before the Board? Any new business? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to go into the hallway now, we're going to unveil the plaque and the sign, and then we're going to go into the cafeteria for some refreshments. Thank you, everyone.